For which it stands, one nation under God, the indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Senator.
Senator.
Favor.
Hi.
Through the minutes of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting in the June thirtieth, twenty twenty five schedule session.
Senator.
Senator.
All in favor?
Hi.
Prove employee claims filed with the county auditor for one thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-six cents.
Senator.
Senator.
All in favor?
Hi.
Prove the fiscal year twenty-six salary and wages for county employees as required by.
Senator.
Senator.
Favors?
Hi.
Prove depository resolution for the treasurer's office.
Okay, that's the function that we do annually. Uh, the treasurer's office is, all the accounts are same except for the I P A P account. Last year, we had that at thirteen point five, or excuse me, twelve point five million. And Gina would like to raise it to thirteen point five million due to the fact that it get, that account gets the best interest rate. So that is the change on the treasurer's office form.
Get a motion to approve the treasurer.
Senator.
Senator.
All in favor?
Hi.
Next, approve your depository regulations to the sheriff's office.
Uh, no changes on that one. They have accounts down at Bank Iowa and Queens Iowa Security. Everything is the same as last year. It's just required to do this yearly.
Get a motion, please.
Senator.
Senator.
All in favor?
Hi.
Prove the depository resolution for the auditor's office.
Uh, same thing. We have one account down at Northeast Security Bank, and that is what funds our health insurance claims, and there was no change. It's at three point five million.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Prove the quarterly report from the auditor's office for fifty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Senator.
Senator.
Favor?
Hi.
Uh, approve the monthly fund balance report. Fun marked down to the wire, weren't we?
Yep, that was the one, that's uh, for fiscal year end FY twenty-five. The league balances that's showing in these funds is what will carry over into the next year.
I'll make the motion.
Senator.
Favor?
Hi.
Prove the monthly department expense report.
That was in your packet here. It is basically each department's fiscal year end and how much money was left over and.
The percentage of use.
Yep. I'll make the motion to approve the monthly departmental expense report.
Senator.
All in favor?
Hi.
Next, approve the promotion of Lyle Oll to lead custodian and fifty-dollar monthly cellphone reimbursement.
Yeah, anything else?
Uh, no, uh, we spoke with Lyle and he is, has accepted this change, and we've already worked with him on the fifty-dollar reimbursement, so all of that is good. But yeah, other than that, everything is good and approved.
This is something we talked about.
Many.
Lyle's a long-term team member of our county and has been here over thirty years. And we talked about this back when Clayton's still in office, and we discussed it during our budget talks also, uh, that we were considering this, and I think it's a, a great step for us, and it gives a little better direction to the custodial duties within the, uh, building and our properties.
Yep.
And, uh, recognizes Lyle for his contributions. We appreciate him.
He knows the courthouse better than anybody. I would make the motion to approve the motion of Lyle Oll to lead custodian and the fifty-dollar monthly cellphone reimbursement.
Senator.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Items for discussion, place on file, the family manure management plan, Dan Doma, Jefferson, Jefferson. Asphalt finisher, Byron Township, section twenty, Michael's site, Buffalo Township, section seven. Can I get a motion to put those on file?
Senator.
Senator.
All in favor?
Hi.
Discuss the request of detox withdrawal management services. Right, that's the response.
Yeah.
There is going to be an upcoming change starting July first. As many of you are aware, the state has engaged in a realignment of the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. This behavioral health services statewide plan will no longer include funding for ASAM level three point seven, which is our substance use detox withdrawal management program. With this change in funding, citizens who do not have a funding source will be left to pay for the services out of pocket, or they will go to the local emergency room for detox services, which is less cost effective and will decrease the number of hospital beds available for acute medical care. Prior to the state's funding change in twenty nineteen, that added coverage for ASAM level three point seven detox services. Community and family resources had several county contracts in place for citizens who had no funding source for necessary detox services. At that time, each county agreed to pay for, on a fee-for-service basis, for citizens in need of detox services. And those who were on pork medals, I am posing that we return to that fee-for-service platform starting July first. The current daily rate for detox is set at five hundred fifty dollars based on the data from last fiscal year. There were one Buchanan County resident who had no funding source in state for a combined total of two days for a total annual cost of eleven hundred dollars. I would ask that you kindly consider providing care under a county contract for unfunded individuals from Buchanan County starting July first. One way that the county may consider paying for these services would be through opioid settlement dollars. There are two areas in the settlement fund guidelines where detox withdrawal management services would align with the approved uses. Or strategies in schedule A, medication assistance, treatment, distribution, and other opioid-related treatment. Number four, provide treatment and recovery support services such as residential and inpatient treatment, intensive outpatient treatment, outpatient therapy or counseling, and recovery housing that allow or integrate medication with other support services. Next, approve uses in schedule B, treat opioid use disorder. Seven, support evidence-based withdrawal management services for people with O U D or any co-occurring mental health condition. Please let me know if we can collaborate to create an agreement that sports understand, underserved unfunded individuals in assessing essential services. It treats substance use disorders while also helping to preserve emergency room beds for patients requiring acute medical care that cannot be provided elsewhere. And she has her contact information there. What's everyone's thoughts on this?
Budget's already been done.
I'm sorry?
Our budget's already been done.
I stand by that.
Yeah, folks that need help, they're covered under, under a towel anyway to get help at the emergency rooms.
Explain, please.
Come down.
You say.
Oh, sure. Uh, emergency medical treatment and later labor act. So anybody who shows up on the county hospital property has to be seen if they want to be. Okay. So, uh, there's sources out there, there's.
They also get charged.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not free.
It's not free.
And you typically, these people, I mean, not to typically, these people are at the end of their rope because, you know, they have drank or abused themselves out of a job.
We do have.
And it is a mental illness.
We do have funds in our opioid settlement funds. But it only pertains to opioids. It does not include alcohol or anything like that.
Yeah, that feels like something Griffin and, and those folks should direct as far as the opioid usage.
So at this point, uh, is it the board's decision to, uh, decline, uh, participation in this?
How much was, were they asking for, Jim?
That was kind of open.
It was real open.
And I've never heard of this group. So.
I just don't see what, like, how we can do it.
Oh, we could figure out a way to do it, but would have to be with a budget amendment.
Right. And I don't really agree with either.
I think, uh, I've got a opioid meeting next week, I believe, with the, uh, committee. If we can discuss it there and see how they want to proceed with it.
Okay.
Or if we.
And they would have to do a budget amendment on their end too, if that's something they chose to do.
Okay.
So are we just gonna leave that?
Leave it, and I will pursue it through.
No action at this time. Okay, thank you.
Next, discuss and approve the updated Buchanan County handbook. Ashley spent a lot of time with the committee going through that. Turn over to you, Emily.
Yeah, so this was a big project when I submitted that we wanted to get done. It has been updated since, uh, January first, twenty sixteen. That's our latest version. Um, so I gathered up a committee. Well, first I went through and with suggestions and just, um, updating, modernizing it a little bit, um, went through the entire handbook. And then I went and created a committee. Um, I, on that committee, obviously myself, and then I had, um, member of the board supervisors, Don Vogel, Chris Vogabush, uh, also tied in Tammy Neighbors, she is payroll, and there was a lot of things, um, in the latest version of the handbook that involved payroll. Wanted her insight on that. And then Ben, uh, for conservation, and then Griffin Hickey, um, public health. So we met a lot, spent lots of hours of suggestions and reaching out to people and um, just trying to make it the best that we can. We worked really well together. Super great to experience that. And then with that, we went through, once we had our final draft, we went through Ayers and Cooney, which is the H R attorneys. Um, they reviewed the entire handbook, um, gave some suggestions, but, um, I was working with Jeff, is his name, and Mike Galloway, and with the suggestions and feedback we got, we, everything was approved, um. Uh, everything's good there. So now the next step is moving it to you guys to approve. So if this is approved today, what that kind of looks like, I'm going to schedule a department-headed meeting. I'll kind of have a cheat sheet on what was the big changes. A lot of it was really just updating and modernizing it, just really making it up to date. Nothing too major of a change. We did change some things. But once I have that cheat sheet done and this is approved, we'll do the department head meeting and then I'll just to explain all the changes. And then after that, we will roll out this handbook to departments to have their employees sign if they have any questions. And then we expect to have this effective August first of twenty twenty-five. Just so we have some time this month to go through and answer questions and deliver it to employees.
I make a motion to approve the employee handbook.
Uh, little discussion first. Did we, could we reach out to any employees or labor unions to get their feedback on this?
Well, they follow their union contracts. Um, there's some, they are, so like, for instance, when I onboard a new employee and they are part of the sheriff's union, let's say, I will give them the handbook and the, uh, contract. But anything in the contract that is, um, the same, like, subject or matter that would be in the handbook, they would follow their contract. So they follow both, but their contract is their quote-unquote bible, and then anything else that isn't mentioned in that contract is in the employee handbook.
Yeah, fair point. Um, you know, the intent is not to take anything away from the employees.
Of course, yes.
My, my concern is that they had a chance to review it and be able to identify that no, in fact, we didn't take anything away. I've looked through it. It's amazing. Well done. It's, I mean, I couldn't find a single thing wrong with it, so good for you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, to be completely transparent, um, we didn't, um, communicate, well, the, uh, like, Buzz, you know, he knows that we're updating or any one part of the union. Um, they knew that we were updating this, but we ensured that nothing would take away from
Yeah.
them. Um, and they will also be delivered this, that they have any questions, they can come to me or anyone in the committee to discuss, but no, great point. But we did not, uh, but we made sure that it wouldn't do anything of that nature.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Absolutely appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next, discuss the order and approve the twenty-eight E E for the very highway bridge program. Brian?
Good morning. Actually, there's two separate documents first. Uh, the twenty-eight E and there's a resolution goes along with that. And I think I sent it out to everybody.
Yeah.
Basically, I would read through it, or if everybody's had the opportunity, I can spin, uh, what it is, is the the, with the grant application, we don't have it, but we're pretty much guaranteed of getting the funding. And the reason is because Iowa's got so many bad bridges that state, statewide, we're worst in the nation. So this is a program to help get rid of some of the bad bridges. And we had a competition at the state level where there was roughly ninety-seven applicants, and that got whittled down to about twenty-two, and we're one of the twenty-two. We had a couple of bridges we put in there, and because of the limitation of funding, we were cut down to one, and that is the W forty bridge north across Sweeten. And that's also one that's got an issue at the Rusty Back Bumble Beach. Yeah, I threw Ben an email just this morning on that. Um, to see if they would be able to help us get through that environmental reviews. So do you want me to read through the resolution or are we good?
That's the right thing to do.
Okay. Whereas Buchanan County Iowa Bridge F H W A number one six zero nine zero, and I got to point out something real quick. The fact that it starts with a one indicates that it was on the old state highway system prior. So this is one of the bridge, many bridges the state dumped on us in two thousand four.
Let's do this.
You remember my terms from the military. As being part of the Joint Competitive Highway Bridge Program, C H B P, whereas Iowa Bridge F H W A one six zero nine zero has been included in a bundle as detailed in exhibit B. I mentioned that real quick too. The, one of the guidelines from the feds was they wanted to bundle bridges. So we're bundling our bridge with Black Hawk. And that means somebody has to be the lead agency and, um, they, Black Hawk County agreed to be the lead agency there. Whereas we accept the contract authority for the bundles defined by detailed exhibit B and acknowledge the roles and responsibilities of each party as detailed in sections three and four. Whereas desired in the interest of Buchanan County to fully participate C H B P activities as sub recipient, provide all requisite information to bring necessary completion of all phases through final completion. Whereas we are in support of the Iowa DOT providing primary recipient roles and duties. Whereas we understand and accept the sub recipient rules and responsibilities defined in the twenty-eight E cooperative agreement for a competitive highway bridge program project. And it's in referenced exhibits. Whereas each county as shown in section four will be responsible for all matching funds and accept any costs excluding the funds requests in the C H B T grant application perspective structures. Now, that was one of the questions. The county attorney's office kind of came up with, how does this funding break down? The grant application will be divided among the twenty-two counties. And that'll amount to about eighty-five hundred dollars, eighty-seven hundred dollars. We don't know exactly, but, um, it ends up in that area. And then each bridge owner would pay for the cost of their bridge. And in this case, the grant is for one point two million, which is the estimated application, which is the amount of estimate on the bridge. Whereas the intent of Buchanan County upon award of C H B plans to enter in a federal aid agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation. That's the next agreement that I'd be bringing forward like this one. Everything gets squared away. The feds will come up with a written agreement. That's the one that says we have to maintain the structure for twenty years and follow the M E T C guidelines. Follow the Title VI guidelines and all those rules and regulations that go along with it.
What's Title VI again, please?
Title VI is non-discrimination.
Okay, thank you.
And so, um, if that begins.
Yeah. Thank you.
So for us to get any federal funds, we have to be in compliance with Title VI. Whereas the intent of Buchanan County upon award to enter into the federal aid agreement be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Buchanan County Iowa to hereby approve and directs the chair to sign this letter of support for the competitive highway bridge program grant and the twenty-eight E cooperative agreement. A competitive highway C H B P grant program provide all pertinent, correspondent, and project information. Adopted the seventh day of July, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. Make the motion that we enter in the agreement for the competitive highway bridge program for the twenty-eight E.
That's all signed, Brian. Do I need, I have copies here. Am I the one that needs to file that with the Secretary of State? Is the DOT doing?
DOT would do that. We would get everything to keep Nikki's stint.
Okay.
So when I, if you want to send it.
So we can get confirmation that it was filed?
Yep.
So we.
We will make sure we have that in the even going forward.
You know where I'm going with that.
Yep, I do.
All right, thanks.
Got a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
That's terrific. That bridge definitely meets.
Yeah, we're still planning, we're under, we have a contract to put the asphalt overlay on it. But again, even trying to, this accelerate process will be a couple of years. So the deck will fall apart if we don't do something.
So we still need to do the overlay?
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, the S H O S file nine seventy-nine, signed by the governor. Stips.
It actually, nine seventy-nine was changing the original, uh, what's going on is the state legislature decided that they need to issue permits to put the heavier trucks on the county roads. And the county engineer didn't like the idea and balked at it real hard. And we were one that gave them a few roads, so I get a cut of the funds. Uh, if you didn't give them any roads, you get none of the money. Well, the legislature did, legislators, probably is a better way to describe it, didn't like the way it was going. And so they, um, they started making some changes, and actually it included all county roads. And some of the things that was in there before is once you got the permit, you could go to your, your place no matter what. And that's where the county engineers worked with them again to make a few changes. Well, we didn't like the initial legislation, and, but this is a little more tolerable. But now what we have to do is we have to work with the DOT to find alternative routes into these locations. And that was in the latest legislation. We can.
These routes are not limited to park so.
No.
I have a question. What happens if you're unable to find the route in?
Then you, we are obligated to make the improvements so they can get in. They don't say how fast. Uh, if all roads leading to and from a loading, unloading location used by a permitted vehicle are designed, this is the way the law has changed to. Are designed as not valid, the local authority shall cooperate with the DOT to find an alternate route for permitting vehicle over the shortest practical route. The department shall adopt rules pursuant to this chapter, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, Don, we're expected to, if they've got some industry in there that they're running these heavier trucks into, we're both expected to get access to. And so for us to petition not to they get, and this is July first, so that gives you an idea of how fast all this is happening. It was late on July first that Nikki came out with the answers. Remember, the law went into effect and the DOT's scrambling all the time. Justifications for standard road segment exemption. So if we want exempt things, this is the process, and these are the guidelines. Is the road segment program for construction? Or does it contain a structure program for construction in the accomplishment year, priority one, priority two, or the county five-year program? And I'm not sure where they're going on that one. Is the road segment payment condition, P C I data collected by the Iowa Payment Management System estimate the average payment condition over defined area based on survey distress rated poor or very poor? And I did grab the maps there. Here's our current ratings, but this was all done prior to me doing a couple of the overlays. So this was before the overlay south of Fairbank. And if I got things put together right, there's two sheets because the one of them actually lists um, what the colors means on the second page. And that was an older one. They didn't, they didn't have it on this one. Thank you. So I have, I have no roads at the present time according to the Iowa Payment Management System that are in the poor range. Even North Jessup, which is listed as good there, but we know how fast it's going to pieces.
Breaking up.
And it's, yeah, we're fully aware of that, that aggregate's going, and it's, it's an accelerated rate.
If we get a permit that says that they're gonna do this on our, on our roads, uh, how much time would it take you to assess, you know, what estimated damages that, that load will apply?
That's work that Dr. Jalan at Iowa State's working on, and the, for the for the superloads, his study was done. What his answer was on the superloads on my concrete pavements costing me over five hundred dollars a mile for them trapped for every mile on my pavements. For asphalt roads, because of their shorter life, it's down to about three fifty. And even our rock road, it figures for every mile, it does about ten dollars worth of damage per mile. And this was from Dr. Halil Jalan's initial studies. He is working on these. Um, that report's not out yet. And I could continue. Does the paved road segment five hundred feet or more have a pavement thickness less than four inches? None of my paved roads do. The only thing that would really come into there is Three Elms. Kentucky Avenue and Stanley, they're at the Chipseal at Stanley. And so those, I could, you know, if we wanted, we could apply. But what, let's go back to, they're gonna both find a way around. So if you're looking at, why did they come in on Kentucky? Because they were trying to avoid scales. Are they gonna, is this gonna change their behavior? No.
Not to drop on the scales, they'd be okay with it.
And again, continuing with the justifications, is the roads segment constrained geometrically by characteristics, curb and gutter, narrow lanes, or structures? Utility poles, traffic signals, et cetera, that prohibit make, unsafe for make infeasible traffic by any type of legal truckload? No, we don't have any of those. And is L P A seeking an exemption due to having a preferred alternate route available?
This really not gonna negatively impact us at this point in time?
No, the heavier loads will take their toll on the system over the years, is what it amounts to. And yeah, dude, I, I don't see any real advantage to try and even trying to go through and petition. I filled out, I, I went through the process once just to learn. And it's a simple process, but that doesn't mean the DOT is gonna approve it either.
Other, other things that they should be looking at that would affect us, that, that we would be able to apply and, and get approved?
Well, my concerns goes back to the accelerated deterioration of the roads. And again, this is Dr. Jalan, and actually I visited with a professor out of New York one time on it. They both gave immediately the same answer. All right, going this twelve percent heavier, twelve and a half percent heavier loads. Well, how much damage does that create? It increases the stresses sixty-three percent, sixty-eight percent, I don't know that number now. Twelve and a half percent increase loads involves about a sixty-eight percent increase in the stresses.
Oh, plus you got the increased tire pressures to litter.
There's the one that, no, but that's, that's the gorilla in the room that nobody's looking at. Because according to Dr. Chris Williams, to go from seventy P S I in your tire pressures to a hundred and fifteen increases the damages on your roads four hundred and forty-three percent. And nobody's looking at tire pressures and nobody wants to address. nobody's looking at tire pressures and nobody wants to address tire pressures. And I can remember bringing this very issue up at a safety meeting in Oklahoma City a year ago. And the highway patrolmen said, ah, tire pressures don't make any difference. Well, there comes a point in time, don't argue with them. Because they don't realize the damage it's creating. Did that sufficiently answer the questions on the subject?
I'm like, sounds like we've got a whole lot of future issues coming up.
That's, that's my concern. So go back, like, just like north of, northern Jessup there. That is adding to the deterioration of the pavement.
Or aggregates.
Or aggregates. Yeah, that accelerates it. The, or aggregates are caused, but that accelerates it.
You consider all the traffic that gets with
trucks.
Going up to Fairbank.
Yes, all times, yes.
Does this create an adequate baseline for what we expect to get out of these, uh, pavements? And then does this change what's gonna happen after the fact?
Uh, I define your question a little bit better, but this is what the D O T is listing our pavements at today.
Yes.
So we need to overlay them all with asphalt.
Pardon me?
Just need to overlay them all with asphalt. Will be good.
It won't make any difference. Actually, according to the D O T, but if you look at the life of the asphalt, it doesn't last any either. It's a problem.
Well, when you get the, the actual tire travel on asphalt and you don't.
Then you have to leave, but yeah. Yeah, and that's becoming a huge, and there's your tire pressure issue. And that's actually Dr. Chris Williams' area of expertise is on the, is on the asphalt systems.
I think that example of that is down at the I three eighty exit at Danah, to come north on one fifty. And how they had to tear out that whole intersection replacement concrete because every time they overlaid it with asphalt, it was like
Yep.
ski slopes. Because of the trucks having to start and stop there.
Yep.
So now that we sufficiently got some popping. And yes, have we delivered this House File nine seventy-nine to death now?
That was my question. Have I, have I answered your questions?
You answered mine.
Yeah.
You brought it up.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, did you want me to stick her up for public comments, which might not be that far off?
Certainly welcome to.
Alright.
Next on the agenda, discuss, discussion of hiring of outside legal counsel. I, I.
You want to, um, do with the audience, what I P I stands for, John?
That is the Iowa Public Protection Bureau. Is that correct?
Order Bureau, yeah, that's my voice.
Don, you want to spill the beans?
So I would just advise everybody at this point, um, the fact that, um, a complaint has been made against the county is public record, the contents of the complaint are not. I don't intend to address any of the contents of the complaint. Um, however, on, uh, June nineteenth, I P I, um, took a, a pending complaint. That, uh, Mr. Keith Weiland had lodged against Buchanan County. And they forwarded that to the county for, uh, formal reply. Since, um, obviously Mr. Weiland's on the board, um, my office anybody, um, there's a question whether, um, so the county, the way chapter twenty-two is written, um, the open records, uh, request goes to a government body, a government body is um, the county itself is a political subdivision, so the complaint itself is against the county and also the lawful custodian of records. Um, both, uh, could be at fault. Um, so, uh, in this particular case, I would I don't want to give any advice whatsoever, um, on it, but I would think, um, the first step would be for the county to initially, um, have outside counsel to look at it to see whether, um, one attorney could represent both, um, Buchanan County and the, um, custodian of records. And I'm guessing they will find that, um, that position could be troublesome, just like I find it troublesome to be on any side of this one. Um, so I just wanna at, at least advise the board to, um, hire outside counsel to look at that, and that may result in the need for, um, additional firms or attorneys to reduce that, either individual, members of board or and or the county as a whole and or the lawful custodian. So there may be, uh, multitude of attorneys that need to be involved with this. But I don't want to offer an opinion on whether that is necessary at this point or not. I will leave it to, um,
Anything about side legal counsel will result in significant financial impact to the county.
Yes, it will.
Don, you have any comments or questions?
I try to make it, not even make any comment on anything anymore. It's just easier. Um, I guess we're gonna hire outside counsel, or outside counsel. You know, I never ever thought that one member of the board would try to make a crap show of this county. It was ran so well before, and now all of a sudden, the side we're falling off the deep end. Purely whiskey product itself. So I'm making motion to hire outside counsel. Somewhere we need to go with this.
I'll stack it. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Upstream.
Okay. Back, uh, we move to public comment. Any in the audience that's counts, Wendy's?
I'd better get for a hang.
Sure.
I'm just glad you're getting for an order.
Anywhere from
I'm just curious.
A hundred to twelve hundred dollars now. Depending on the.
And we could leave, leave three of them?
Uh,
Possibly.
Possibly.
Possibly four of them, one for each of you. Um, where's those funds come from, can I ask?
We'll have to do a budget amendment. It'll probably come out of the general fund.
So we were concerned earlier this year about our carryover. I don't think this is an appropriate way to use our carryover dollars. I'm appalled. I'm appalled that we live in a county that we can't have three people that are elected or people that are elected. They can't have enough communication and enough respect for each other to not have to go this route. I'm appalled. This hasn't been an issue for how many years? I'm just appalled that we're gonna spend this amount of money out of county on something so simplistic that we can't have communication. It's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah.
With Dr. Weiland was brought up as the complaint, can you, I don't know if it's a public record to expound upon it?
I'm, I'm not gonna, uh, comment on an ongoing investigation.
It's a public record. It's out there.
I don't believe that contents are, just the fact that it exists. It would be up to I P I at the end of their investigation
Okay.
whether or not to make.
Right?
How long would an investigation take?
Take over you. Those, the ones I've dealt with in the past, I, I think we had one in fifteen, one in eighteen, and one in twenty. Never. I was able to respond within days. Obviously, that is not likely the scenario here, since outside counsel need to be hired and brought in today, um, this might take a little bit longer.
Who would do the hiring of the board of, of outside counsel? I mean, do you have a list of lawyers possible, or do you have a list that this, or it's a specialized type of researcher?
Um, there are a number of firms that, um, worked with my government, city government, anybody that, um, would have experience working with open meetings, open records. Anybody that's, uh, any firms that have represented cities in the past or currently. And now, um, there's a firm that I believe.
Lynch Dallas is a good job.
Yeah, and that's why I was saying they represent the city here and.
They used to be Jessup's H R attorney.
Yeah. I know, um, I believe in the past, I think there've been times that, um, claims have been, or lawsuits have been filed against the county. If we go through, are unsure they're often ones I could, or.
Yeah, that's, if, like, we get, if we have a lawsuit, then we, our I cap attorneys take care of it, but this.
But this is, so my thought was first to contact the legislature, because they're the layer of the county and they, and they come to the area. I don't know if that would lessen any expenses to the county. They do stuff locally, but at least have them do that initial review and see whether it needs to branch out into different attorneys, different firms, or whether it was something they could handle. Didn't you say you, uh, lawful custodian of the records, can you say who lawful cust- Um, it was not identified in the public information from I P I, uh, they only identified Buchanan County as the responding part. County at the whole. Which I, I think I went back and looked at those, um, the, some of the prior ones I've dealt with, the fifteen, eighteen, and twenty, I think are the ones that, uh, after the investigation, they made some I did make formal findings or dismissal or however resulted, and that information is all available on their website. So it's deleted and out there. I believe all of the, uh, one of those identified, um, it was the complaint versus Buchanan County Sheriff's Office, all the rest of, all identified complaint versus Buchanan County as this one did. Thank you.
Bonnie?
I agree. I think one needs to be on, on board. I am also, Paul, but I'm also deeply disappointed, Keith, that, um, you have put your personal aspirations ahead of become good at this county. Um, it's been pretty obvious since you came on board in January and filed this process a number of times that you have had an agenda. And, um, it's pretty obvious to me personally that you would like to sacrifice though members of this board and whoever else you've asked to further a little kingdom on your own. And that's what I'm deeply disappointed in, because I was hoping that when you stepped into this position, that you would have the county's best interest at heart, that you would protect the county, protect the people, protect the land, like what the rest of this board has done for years. Um, you have some background, you have things to offer to this county, and you've chosen to dismiss that to more by yourself instead of putting the county ahead of that. And I truly am deeply disappointed in that because there was potential there on you killed for ignore.
Thank you.
I couldn't have said it any better.
Yes.
Um, just the complaint of having a re- financial responsibility in protecting themselves as I would as a citizen making a complaint. Um, why, why would the county have to pay more in taxes for frivolous event? Who's responsible for paying that?
Well, number one, we can't call it a frivolous event until it's been investigated and proven. It will be a costly undertaking that's unplanned and will require use of county funds to uh, go through the litigation process of this whole thing.
But there's nothing we can do because we are being penalized financially for the actions and behaviors of one individual. And sad, what, what happens? I mean, this is an elected individual. And if they're threatening us, which basically this action is financially, what constitutes our rights as maybe not having this person on the board? Is there such a thing as impeachment?
I'd answer that. Next. Maybe impeachment is a kind of a ballot, would be. Certainly a time.
Because it's, you know, is it, let's say it's a recall election. And that would cost, and we know what elections cost. But you compare that to what the cost is of four separate lawyers, hundred bucks an hour, uh, extending no longer they extended, the more money they made. In the end, is this gonna be better? Is this individual gonna be better?
First, a recall election would cost the neighborhood of three, fifty thousand dollars, correct? To be counted wide. We have to have all the whole place still be.
And what, what does that cost? Thirty thousand?
Forty, forty one thousand. Yeah.
And what's the weather for owners? It's the best way to use our word.
Any other comments?
Can I, Paul, Chuck, yes, your name? Good. That regardless of what happens after today, the complaint has been filed and has to be responded to appropriately. The county's under a, a legal obligation to respond to the complaint.
And technically the county is prohibited from taking any retaliatory action. So we're in a serious mess that has been created.
Does the county, I'm sorry, does, does the county response come from the county attorney or from the chair? Or is the whole, or?
It will be coming from our legal counsel if we hire.
Oh, okay, the outside counsel, okay. In the past, I have usually been the individual making the response.
It, it's gonna be difficult for him since he's legally representative to be a spokesperson. Best you'd have question.
Just curious what Mr. Weiland's objective is here.
Again, I'm not gonna respond to an open investigation, Chris.
John, a question, is the comments being made about recall election? Being gone for a few years. In Iowa, it is impossible to put a recall election along with the regular election in November to celebrate. If it's beyond the same without, like, that would save the county a lot of money if the people still choose to lose it like that.
I, I cannot.
If something happened and there was a vacancy in any elected official office at this point, it would either A, the board of supervisors could make an appointment to fill that vacancy, or B, a special election can be held. It would not be possible to put it on this fall city school election.
That's, that's.
Yes.
It would be the next county-wide.
Yeah.
It would.
Yeah, or call for a special.
It would be twenty-six if that's what the people chose to do a petition. Yeah. Yeah, be a twenty-six if that's what people chose to do a petition. Yeah.
And I believe in Iowa code, there has to be a petition circulated before it can even go to a valid measure.
Right, yeah, excellent signatures, like to head up your thing that future.
Any other public comment? If not, I will entertain my motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Central.
Okay.
Bye.
Thank you.